I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair of Knight Morton. Vice Chair Fleming.
Here.
President Milliken.
Here.
Secretary Davis.
Here.
Trustee DeBarge.
Here.
Trustee Archer.
Here.
Trustee Lina.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Four.
Okay, here. Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the approval of the minutes in Tab A. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the July 17th monthly meeting as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion for the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to citizen participation. Verbal communications. I think we heard from WCCEA earlier. Did they have anything else?
No, not here.
No, I think they're gone. Okay. Any public comments? Anybody like to make public comments? All right. Vanessa, did we have any written communications?
There were two received.
Okay. All right, moving on to special reports. First up, introduction to of new faculty. Dr. Herm.
All right, good evening. You know, we just want to introduce our new faculty and some of our instructional staff to the board. This summer gave us the opportunity to fill a lot of positions. We spent a lot of time interviewing. HR actually held diversity training for all of the faculty and staff who contributed to those hiring committees. And they also did a lot to assist us with enlarging the pool of candidates that we brought in for interviews. The depth and diversity that we are bringing in from experiences with this group of faculty, we're just very proud of. They have a lot of global and local outreach experience. Some things to think about is that they bring in areas of environmental science, child development, cybersecurity, auto cybersecurity, entrepreneurship, and we even are adding some male representation to our nursing faculty. They have some remarkable stories and a convergence of skills that will, I think, positively impact our students, and we're very excited to have them all. Some of them are here, so I'm going to ask them to stand as I call their name. Alicia Noel from nursing. Beth Marshall from childcare. Benjamin Morahan, nursing simulation classified faculty. Cindy Milnes in cybersecurity. Daniel Majes in astronomy. Hari Kazami in industrial technology and advanced manufacturing. Jill Jepson in art. Julie Lee, who is the new advisor in advanced transportation, advanced technologies division. That was on my mind. Jeremiah Philhart in automotive services. Joanne Yastick, who's the new director of nursing. Christine Danko, who's the new art coordinator. Catherine Hernandez in surgical technology and sterile processing. Smeeta Malpina in environmental science. And Anthony Terry in business and entrepreneurship.
Wow.
We're excited to have them on campus.
How many of them are teaching faculty?
How many of them are teaching faculty? So only Joanne, I'm the director of nursing. So three of them are not. So that is 11.
Okay. Eleven are teaching faculty. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the STEM Scholars. Dean Good.
The best part of the STEM Scholars program are here behind me. Dr. Susan Dentel is the principal investigator on a grant that we received in partnership with University of Michigan, Michigan State, Western Michigan, and Wayne State, along with Mott Community College, to bring in underrepresented students into STEM fields with the specific purpose of transfer. So Susan reached out. We had no idea what we would find, and we got a cohort of 26 students who spent their summer with us getting ready for the program. And three of four of them are here tonight to share just a little bit of their journey so far.
Okay, and we can start that video. Thank you, Warren. All right, I actually, I wondered if I should just do this off the cuff or if I should read. And I have so much I want to share with you, I decided to read. Okay, so I promise to look at you occasionally. So we are pleased to report that our very first Washtenaw Community College STEM Scholar cohort of 2018, they're here on campus this fall. This very special group of students, they're pursuing STEM-based degrees. They're going to have their associates in science at WCC in order to transfer successfully to the university and to complete a bachelor's degree. Students are receiving customized curriculum focusing on their interest in natural sciences, physical sciences, computer and information sciences or engineering. I speak all day long and I'm nervous. Can you believe that?
It's a different audience.
Over the summer, the cohort participated in a summer intensive, which began with a couple of immersion days to help facilitate leadership, team building, and cohort cohesiveness. The first day consisted of a U of M challenge course, which focused on physical challenges and activities that are based on strategy and collaboration. The second day consisted of an interdisciplinary approach to team building, in which we utilized the WCC dance studio to teach salsa. The rest, the rest of the summer intensive involved curriculum taught by a team of instructors to increase overall college readiness, social skill development such as grit, perseverance, self-responsibility awareness, team and leadership training, cultural awareness, cohort independence, financial literacy, and career exploration. The STEM Scholars also, along with our sister community college at Mott, visited the four Alliance Universities, which includes Western Michigan University, Michigan State University, University of Michigan, and Wayne State University, to learn more deeply about the STEM colleges at these schools, admissions, financial aid, undergraduate research opportunities, and they participated in some interesting STEM-based hands-on activities. This fall, the program is working on a number of different levels for these wonderful students. Faculty staff mentoring for each STEM scholar, which also includes the completion of a service learning project. Academic coaching to assist with study skills, test anxiety, time management, resource information, and generalized support. Customized and regular academic advising, and I have teamed up with Alexandra McCracken to facilitate smooth curriculum planning for each student in the cohort. Weekly luncheon learns to assist in further skill development and reinforcement from some of the things that we talked about in the summer intensive. Academic assistance, computer, financial literacy, cohort connection, and enrichment. Curriculum pathways and attentive teachers that will help students to develop confidence and knowledge. Some of the major STEM-based classes like chemistry and math have built-in special one-hour study blocks after the classrooms. So, and the teachers are involved in those, and we have lots of communication between these teams. We have tutoring that is specific and customized to the STEM scholars, which includes open tutoring sessions, study groups, and focused individualized tutoring. And students in the cohort, they're taking some of their classes together, and so they can support and help each other. You guys have a group chat?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Four of them going?
A special research class that will provide a detailed look at research and how it works, literature and citation, as well as hands-on practical laboratory experiences. In addition, students in the cohort will complete a multidisciplined team project in order to submit their work to the National Science Foundation Community College Innovation Challenge. The teams have been recently formed, and we are working with group structure and decision-making. In a couple of weeks, we're going to do a really comprehensive selection process for topics. And we're going to, each team has to have a faculty sponsor and a community sponsor. So they'll be meeting their faculty and community sponsors. And then also Dr. David Shear, who retired. He is helping me to build a community expert group that they can consult with if they have questions. And then we're also working in conjunction with the library. Joyce and her team, Sandy and Maureen, are doing some library research workshops. Claire Sparklin is going to do some speech coaching. Tom Zimmerman is going to set up through the Writing Center some writing, help with what they're working on in their projects. And then MSU, the S-STEM grants, they are going to do research. I didn't tell you this. Specifically, specifically through the research course. So they're going to look at Mott and Washtenaw and really, really see what this research course is doing, how it's helping students, and then following them through the transfer process and seeing if all of our efforts are actually having some effects. And then, I'm almost done, I'm sorry. All STEM Scholars will participate in summer research work internships this coming summer, end of the summer. They're really excited about it. So, and then we're going to do extensive transfer assistance and coordination with our Alliance institutions. So in addition to the work being done with the WCC STEM Scholars, we are also building wonderful relationships with the community by offering monthly Superstem Saturdays with morning math games, puzzles, challenges, and tutoring. By the way, our beautiful math tutors are working with that, along with math faculty. And then afternoon interactive science activities. And so we have faculty who have volunteered time to do one Superstem Saturday, something fun, free to middle schoolers and high schoolers, to the community, because we need to give back. And in February, we hope to host an annual STEM Week, featuring speakers, fun science activities, STEM projects, and highlighting science and math in our classrooms. And all of our STEM Scholars will do presentations, showing their big project. And then we have three female science engineers or pre-engineering students, and yep, Alicia is one of them. And they are really going to promote engineering, women in engineering, and we have lots of really great ideas happening. Yep. Okay, so I wanted to, Warren, I'm going to play that second video. We're going to play you a brief video, and then we're going to have the STEM Scholars just talk to you for a moment. And I'm sorry I'm taking too long.
No, no, go ahead.
Lot more fun than parking lots.
Other video. There's a second video.
Yeah, there's a second one.
It's not this one. Let me just play.
Not that one.
No. Matthew A., yeah, we don't have a second one, I'm sorry.
Huh.
You can just hear from the STEM.
Just the STEM students? So I know Chris sent them, but who knows, right? In the world of...
We'll send the second video, you can watch it at home.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so would you guys be willing to share some of your experiences? Might we start with Theo, and then we'll work it out.
So hello, everyone. I'm Theodore Redan, I'm part of the STEM Scholars Program. I'm going for environmental science and sustainability. I need your time. This program has been amazing so far, honestly. Just so much support everywhere. My mentor, Chris Good, has been helping me out a lot as well. I'm just so excited for the potential of what I can become through this program. Yeah, just a lot to help, it's really awesome.
My name is Arabi Jan, and my major now is general studies, natural sciences, and math. And hopefully I won't swing to the public health field. This program has been a very good help to me. One day I was trying to remember how I ended up being here, then, I don't know how I ended up speaking to Susan about the program, but I remember, I remember following her, asking her about the program all the time, and then she, we were having the welcome day, and then I saw her, and then I really sat down with her, and she told me all the nice things about it. I said, "Okay, this sounds good, I'm going to join." And I haven't regretted one bit of it. And recently, I've been trying to talk to other people who are also interested in the science field, and hopefully will be the first and last. And I hope that whatever that is coming out of this will be passed on to all the others who are going to come to Washtenaw Community College.
Hi, hello, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lisa Schmidt, and I am going, my major right now is pre-engineering. I hope to do mechanical engineering and then in the future do aerospace engineering. But that's far there. The STEM term has truly been a blessing to me. Everyone is just so excited to be there all the time, and there's so much support. The tutoring is amazing, and I actually, I hope it becomes a seed that becomes this really big thing in the community, not just in the community college, but everywhere. The other day at my job, there was this little girl, and she said to me, "Oh, I want to be an engineer, but I don't know, because I'm a girl and I don't really see a lot of girls in engineering." And I actually gave her Susan's information. This girl was 13, but you know, you can't, you can never start them too early, and that's just, I wish someone had the mentality like that with me. I'm the very fir-, I'm the first generation in college. My family's never gone to college, and so this is really scary to me. I don't know anything about college. I still figure stuff out, like refunds and financial aid, that's all. But Susan's just a great help, and she's just so excited all the time, and I owe her so much. I'm grateful.
Hello, everybody. I'm Emmy Joel Atigwa. First off, I want to thank the Board for allowing us to be here, as well as the WCC faculty. I want to thank Susan, my mentor, Nagash. Excuse me, a little emotional, just never thought I would be in the situation that I am now, coming where I come from. It's everything I've been through. I'm just really grateful just to be here, pursuing engineering, hopefully electrical engineering, and then furthering my studies and possibly law or patent law. Thank you, Kim Jones. Probably finishing my career teaching, going back teaching, and giving back to just STEM, even programs like this, WCC, and just everybody that helped me get to this point, and everybody that's going to help me continue my journey.
That's remarkable.
Can we say one more thank you to the foundation? The WCC Foundation gave all the students a book scholarship this summer to attend the summer bridge, because they were giving up any kind of work opportunity here. And we couldn't give them scholarships because it wasn't a credit class, so the foundation stepped in and funded both schools, established the foundation.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful.
Outstanding. Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck to you. Thank you.
I wanted to say something. Everything is good, but I want to thank those who always give us food.
If you feed them, they will food.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right, moving on to the Voter Democracy Project. VP Blakey.
I'd like to introduce the WCC Voter Project. And Matea Pagic holds a bachelor's degree in arts, in his arts, excuse me, Bachelor of Arts in History and Political Science with upper division honors from Northern Illinois University. She's a student that's leading this project. She is currently studying paralegal studies at WCC with hopes to obtain a law degree in the future. Matea is a Student Life Officer in the Department of Student Development and Activities. She works with students to connect them to clubs and activities on campus and believes that connecting with students on a personal level and getting them involved early on in their college careers will get students excited about their education and their futures. Matea is a member of the National Society of Collegiate Scholars and the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. She is also the founder and president of the WCC UNICEF Campus Initiative and president of the WCC Pre-Law Club. Matea was awarded a Fall 2018 Fellowship from the Nationally Recognized Nonpartisan Campus Vote Project to help create a voting culture at Washtenaw Community College. She has been working on this project since summer 2018 with advising from professional faculty Kim Jones and Director of Student Development and Activities Peter Laskovich. Matea will be presenting on the Voter Engagement Initiatives project right now.
I'll wait till it's out. But I guess I can introduce myself. So hi, thank you for letting me speak today. So my name's Matea Pagic, and I'm a WCC student and a Campus Vote Project Fellow. So the Campus Vote Project is an initiative to increase voter engagement amongst college students across the United States. The project is sponsored by the nonpartisan Voting Rights Organization, the Fair Election Center, and NASPA, the Organization for Student Affairs, Professional, and Higher Education. As a fellow, my first task was to create a plan on voter engagement initiatives with measurable goals for WCC. My goals for Fall 2018 are to increase Turbo Vote signups by 2,500 students, reach 250 WCC students through educational seminars, and increase WCC student voter turnout from 50.5% to 60%.
That's great.
To do this, I have planned a number of activities and events, such as a social media and print awareness campaign, tables around campus where students can register to vote, educational seminars on the voting process, classroom visits to faculty who want to teach their students about Turbo Vote, and student events on the day of and day after the Michigan general election. I have received a lot of help from partners around campus who understand the importance of teaching students civic engagement, and I have also received help from all campus partners, such as the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters and the Washtenaw County Clerk's Office. Although my fellowship only lasts one semester, some of my collaborations will help create a long-term voting culture at WCC. New Student Orientation has collaborated to include Turbo Vote registration within both in-person and online orientations, so every new student gets a chance to register. Various offices around campus will soon have permanent register-to-vote-here banners in front of their office, and students will be able to get walk-in assistance with Turbo Vote year-round. And the WCC Turbo Vote system that we're using to register students sends automatic email and text messages to students about upcoming elections, absentee voting, and valid An exciting part of my project is that upon completion of my final report, Washtenaw Community College will officially be awarded the national designation of a voter-friendly campus.
That's great.
Yes.
That's great.
Good.
It has been a lot of work, but I'm very excited to see students, staff, and faculty coming together to create a voting culture at WCC.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
That's amazing.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
How many people have you registered to vote so far?
So far, as of last Friday, we have 249. So we're 10% of the way to Oracle.
And how many people are actually working on doing the registrations?
So before, it was just kind of me and then the Student Activities Office, I'm kind of taking, bringing in students, tabling, talking to them in that manner. Right now, today, actually, we had the county, we had two people from the County Clerk's Office in the Student Center, as well as four volunteers throughout the day, both in LA and G.I., registering students. And when I checked in with them, they each had about nine people registered at about the halfway point of their tabling.
Great, thank you.
The final number today for League of Women Voters was 45 registrations. I'm not sure about that. And then another 45 registered within the past two days. I have no more broadcast.
Yes. Excellent.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, WTMC update.
Good evening. I'm finding that this screen is really dark over here, I'm just telling you, it's really dark.
Too much light.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Kyle Cova, who will give us an update on Washtenaw Technical Middle College.
So this is always a nice evening for me, because I get to come and talk about something I'm incredibly proud of, and that you guys really help and support. So I want to give you some numbers about WTMC, and I think one of the most important things to remember is WTMC is not a selective high school. There's a myth out there, I just met someone at the ISD who said, "Well, you get all the best students." And I said, "Well, that's actually not what the data says." And so what I want to talk about is a little bit about that data, because I think it shows you what an incredible instructional staff I have, because of what they're able to do. So 19% of our entering students are below a Level 3 in reading. And so we have to work with them. We have incredible reading instruction. 49% of our entering students are not sufficiently prepared to do Algebra I, so that would be the equivalent of 097. So they go into a similar 067 class. 10% of our entering students are not prepared to do pre-algebra, so they're only able to do numeracy, which is the equivalent of 037. And one of the things to think about, our graduation requirement is Math 176. So we take all of those students who are coming in at those levels, and we make sure that they're able to do Math 176. 10% of our entering students are special education students. Over 50% are first-generation college students this year, self-identifying 57% said they're first generation. And this is a really interesting, we've actually almost tripled the amount of students who identify as free and reduced. So over the last eight years, we've grown from 11%, and now we're at 34% who are free and reduced. And I think this last part is really important to understand, too. We have no control of the students coming in. So of the 210 incoming students, they came from over 100 different educational experiences, all over the place. And so we have to get them all, we have to work them together. And so as you see the next data point, I think it's good to kind of set where these students are coming from. I also like to give a financial update. About almost 40% of our operating budget goes to WCC, so $1.5 million in tuition. The 3% for the chartering is $192,000. Rent and support service, $150,000, and $48,000 for bookstore royalties, for $1.9 million. But these are the statistics that I'm most proud of. We're 2.6% of the credit students. The next one's pretty interesting. We used to be almost 75% of the dual-enrolled students. So this is how much dual enrollment has impacted the college. We've actually, as we've grown, so you may not know this, but we are by far the fastest-growing institution in Washtenaw County, and one of the fastest-growing institutions in the state. We've grown by 126% over the last eight years. The next closest school to us has grown by 19%. We are, so we're 2.6% of the enrolled students, but we are 4.5% of course enrollment. And then I think what's important is when you look at degrees and certificate, those 2.6% of the students complete almost 10% of the degrees and certificates. And we're really influential, I think, in the STEM field. So if you look at General Studies in Math and Science, we are typically about 50%, and this is over the last three to four years, 50% of all the associate degrees in general math and science, 16% of liberal arts, 16%. 87% of our graduates last year completed an associate degree. And so you can kind of see some of the breakdown by divisions, but if you look at that last one, math, science, and engineering, we're across-the-board 30% of those students who are getting degrees. And I know that's also important to the state. These are some other things. Students have a 97% success rate, getting a C or above. Last year, our students completed over 15,000 college credits with a 3.46 grade point average. Our retention rate for students, and this is something I'm really proud of, when I first came to the program, the retention rate and completion was about 63%. We are now, those students that come to us in August, 98% of them are going to finish the program.[1799.88] the program. And you can see 87% graduated with an associate degree. We are getting a lot more students into really highly selective colleges. So we've gotten students into Brown, Stanford, Swarthmore, Cornell. We had two students get full rides to University of Virginia. Last year, 9% of our students got into University of Michigan, and they're bringing with them 60 transferable credits. So we're really proud of that piece also. And, you know, I think what's important to us is people are noticing that we don't, you know, we're taking students from a variety of backgrounds and really moving them forward. President Blanca and I were able to sit on a board with a group of educators who were wondering about education in Washtenaw County, and they came from Columbia, Missouri, and they were fascinated by what's going on at WCC and the WTMC model. And since they've left, I've gotten calls from the superintendent twice, the person from technology, and the president of the college to really understand what this is about and how we're making this happen. So it's not just people that are recognizing, but people when they come and they are at the college see what we're doing. Again, Newsweek and US News and World Report have labeled us one of the best high schools in the United States. We're enabling the top 10 high schools in Michigan and preparing students for college readiness, and that's based on the SAT scores. And if you look at our SAT scores and you look at our free and reduced and you look at where the kids are coming in, they don't mesh. And that's just the quality work that my instructional staff does and continues out when they go into WCC classes. So I just want to thank you for contributing to WTMC's success. I think it's a real amazing thing that's happened in this community, and if we didn't have that partnership and that kind of synergy between the two institutions, we couldn't make this happen for, we're over 750 kids, so 750 students that get an incredible jump start to their life and don't build debt, which is pretty amazing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah?
Yep.
You have 750 students, and what's your staff level? How many staff or how many faculty?
We have 22 staff. I have two counselors, I have three teacher consultants, and I have myself a part-time assistant dean and three administrative assistants.
Good work. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Yeah, you take students down to ninth grade now. How quickly do the ninth-grade students, based upon your experience, what, over the last three years, four years? How quickly does, how long does it take for them to typically transition into community college classes?
Typically, our ninth graders are transitioning quicker, so it's kind of an interesting study because we have 100 ninth graders and we take 100 students from other educational experiences and they create a singular cohort. Our students that we get in ninth grade are usually transitioning at least a semester and sometimes a year quicker. Where it really matters is in math. We're finding that the students we can get in ninth grade in math, we probably have, of the 100 ninth graders we had last year, over 50 of them will be in Math 176 this year, so as 10th graders. And so the end goal for them is really 191, you know, calc II, calc III, so.
So is that, do you find that getting the students younger makes it easier to transition them into Math 176?
Yep, absolutely.
Is that one year, really?
Yep. Well, I think because we take them where they're at.
Right.
And we really, and I have a great staff who, they do amazing things for kids.
You do. And I can tell you, I've served as liaison to TMC for, I don't know how many years now, but a long time, that the board of TMC does an outstanding job of supporting Carl and the work that he and his staff does, very dedicated group of professionals who are very knowledgeable about the college and who support everything that goes on there. And Carl is one of the best school administrators I have ever met.
I'm lucky.
So are we.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay. The, next up, the Union Training Partnership, VP Mueller.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, this year was another really successful year for our skilled trades folks that were on campus that participated in instructor training.
I apologize, I appreciate your call.
This one's working.
We can see everything.
Well, you can see, there's about 829, 832 people that are standing in that picture, and you can see Dr. Blanca just two.
Oh, there she is.
There she is. The ironworkers, it's always exciting when the ironworkers come to town. They're a fun group of people. They generate about $5 million of economic impact to Washtenaw County. So they're an important group, not only for the campus, but for the entire community. Just to give you just some really quick facts about them, they were here from July 16th through the 20th. They actually come in a week prior to that to set up everything. And I'll tell you, the success, I think, of the ironworkers' training program really belongs, you know, I'd be remiss not to mention it, it really belongs to Chrissy Lindman and Patrick Downing. Those people with the groups that they work with, the folks that end up supporting them are just tremendous, and the ironworkers love them, and they love Washtenaw Community College. So I think you should be very proud of the people that work here that represent us because they're doing a fantastic job. Of the participants, they grow every single year, so 800, you can see 829 of them this year from both the United States and Canada. But this year, they also had over 100 executives on the campus from General Motors, Ford Motor Company, Chrysler, et cetera. Those people that are hiring the ironworkers and they're training them how to go about working to facilitate those contracts and get them in place for their organizations. So we really had two things kind of going on this year, ITP training kind of, and then we also had the training related to those executives from those large corporations. In addition to that, I can tell you that they had 55 individual classes on campus, and almost every WCC class building was yours. And it's about, I want to say about 125, 126 participants from our own staff that actually helped to facilitate all of the steering that way in one way or another. Making it happen, we couldn't do it by ourselves. So the Ann Arbor Convention and Visitor Bureau, Ann Arbor Destination, Ann Arbor absolutely is vital to helping us to be able to house all of these people and provide opportunities for them to do things in the evening after training, et cetera. The University of Michigan helps to house them, as well as Concordia University this year, and this is the first time Concordia's been involved. So we were very excited to have Concordia as a partner with us on this. And, any questions? Yeah?
How many students were housed at Concordia and do you think they'll continue to be a part of it with you?
Well, let's see, the participants. I can tell you that I don't know, to be honest with you, I can't, I don't know off the top of my head how many were at Concordia versus the University of Michigan, but normally I would.
This is the first time I've seen Michelle stumped.
Yeah, I know, isn't that terrible? I just don't know.
I practiced this question.
It's at least a couple hundred, I know that, out of the 800 and some, but, you know, they split them between Concordia and the University of Michigan. They really like Concordia because, you know, they could fish and they were allowed water, they love that, they thought that was really great.
But it feels like they'll stick with you.
I think they like Concordia, I think they, you probably heard from them, too. Yeah, I think they really like the campus atmosphere and it was not far from Washtenaw, so it really ended up being a nice partner for them, so, yeah, so it was really good. Anything else? Yeah?
How's the minority count doing, the ironworkers? Any minority, women, I saw a few women in the.
Yeah, there are women, I can't tell you what that number is, I can find out for you, but I can't tell you.
Very few.
Brown people, very few.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's difficult, I know, I just thought I'd ask.
It's few, and, you know, I think that with all the trade unions, we're always looking for, you know, trying to get women and individuals that are from ethnic minorities, you know, involved in the trades because these are great paying jobs.
I understand.
These people make a lot of money.
But they are getting old, oh, can I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can say that.
No.
They're retired.
Retirement age?
We are all getting older.
We are.
Yeah, every day.
We're all getting older, okay, we'll say it that way.
Well, this is the place for them to mix with some younger generation workers and.
Right. Right, and they really like the relationship with the college because of that, and they have a pre-apprenticeship program with us as a result of our relationship with the ironworkers.
How many students get involved in that, do you know?
Initially, when we started it, there were about 10 students that started, and my understanding is that we continue to grow, and I know Emir's had a number of probably 200 or 300 different phone calls and inquiries about the ironworker pre-apprenticeship program. So that's been good for us. Now, not all those people obviously are, you know, they're, some of the folks, when they come in, you know, they end up getting into going to the apprenticeship right away, and then other ones, you know, they're looking at that pre-apprenticeship to be prepared to take the apprenticeship test, but ironworkers should try to get in, so. Okay, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over, oh, there you are, to Marilyn Donham because, you know, she's the magic behind the UA and OPCMIA.
Is it Marilyn? So this summer, we welcomed another building trade union partner to campus. The Operational Plasters and Masons International Association held their first instructor training program here. The group signed a licensing agreement with the UA earlier this year, enabling them to utilize some of the coursework created for the UA. President Blanca also signed a five-year program agreement with Daniel Stefano, the organization's general president. About 100 students attended courses in professional instruction and computer skills for trade instructors. The feedback we received from the group was great, and we're already beginning to work on next year's program. UA Week was also a success this year, with 2,000 students and over 3,000 individuals in attendance, it was the largest event that the UA has ever had on campus. I put together a short movie, if I can find it. Let me know if you guys can see it.
Yeah, we can.
We can, but.
We can see it here.
It's ML, looks like a conference center.
Oh, that's cool.
It's right near us. Right outside.
That's great.
Hmm.
So there you go, any questions?
That was outstanding, Marilyn.
Yeah, I did that myself.
That's really impressive.
Thank you, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great job with that program.
Okay, up next, presentation on the Local Strategic Value Document, Dr. Morrison.
Good evening. Tonight, we're presenting to you our annual Local Strategic Value Document. This is something that we present to you each year, it's a document required by the state to demonstrate that we meet some best practices for the state, demonstrating how we meet the needs of our local community. It is also a document that's really reflective of the collective work that we do as a college every year, that shows how we serve our local community, our students, our business partners, and our community members. This has been a yearly requirement by the state since 2011, 2012 academic year, and it's part of the Education Omnibus Appropriations Act, so it's required for our state funding. This year, it is part of Section 230 of Public Act 265 of 2018. You'll actually find the document under Tab I of the Board Packet, and you'll be able to look at the whole document. And the Local Strategic Value is one small component of the state funding formula to determine the percentage increase that each community college in the state gets in their budget. And I'll repeat, that's one component in the funding formula to determine the percent increase, not their whole budget, but their percent increase. It must be passed by board resolution, which is why later in this meeting, you'll be asked to vote on it. And the reason we bring it to you now is because it is required at the beginning of November that they receive this, so in order for us to have time to package it up and send it to the state, we always bring it to you in September. So a little review of the funding formula breakdown. The strategic value part of it, as you can see on the top there, is only 5% of the funding formula, and we may have mentioned this last year, but President Blanca was really fundamental in actually keeping it there because we really feel it's an important part of what all community colleges present to the state and what they do in their local communities. She was part of a task force that redid the funding formulas in 2015, '16, I believe was the year, and it's a really important part of what we do. The other aspects of the funding formula are sustainability, that 30% is based on base operations. Weighted contact hours make up 30%, and that is weighted by disciplines, so health and technology, discipline contact hours are weighted for a double value. Completion performance improvement is 10% of the funding formula, and that is the rate of improvement, a six-year average for completions, and that is the same value that we report for the governor's dashboard, which is also the same value that we report for the voluntary framework of accountability that we talk about sometimes. Completion number is also worth 10%, and that is the number of certificates, degrees, and transfers as we report to IPeds. Completion rate is, again, that six-year completion rate relative to the 28 community colleges. And then administrative costs are 5%, and lower administrative cost equals higher funding for us and also equals higher instructional cost, that's a good thing, and we tend to do very well there. So the Local Strategic Value is important. It enhances our opportunity for funding. Since they've started requiring this, we have received one of the highest percentages every single year among comparable institutions. We've either received the top funding amount or have been in the top three. But maybe more importantly, if. or have been in the top three. But maybe more importantly, it really showcases what we do and our current impact and documents are specific value to the entire community and it's important to every community college for that very reason. It showcases what they do in their specific community. So, what we might have in our document may be different from another document and it will be posted under the budget and transparency part of every college's website on their homepage. So, anyone can go and look at what a community college is doing in their community to meet these best practices. And so, those best practices, there are 15 of them in three categories. You need to meet four out of the five in each category in order to receive that funding associated with the strategic value. The three categories, economic development, business and industry partnerships, educational partnerships, and community services. And under those, the best practices are really based on maintaining partnerships, offering enrichment, offering training, offering support, and really sustaining activities in the community for businesses, for K-12, other higher ed institutions, for students, for community members. And so, I'm going to turn it over to the vice presidents who will be talking about their areas. And these are highlights. You have the full document under tab I. We're going to be highlighting things that are either new or updated for this year's document and pulling out some of the major things that have happened within the last year have been updated in the last year. So, we will start with Vice President Horns.
So, one of the big things that happened in the last month is that it's been made official that our nursing program has been awarded the Center of Excellence for Nursing Education from the National League for Nursing and recognition of the program's strength and strong support from clinical and employer partners.
Due to Marilyn Donham's commitment to apprenticeships, we were able to increase apprentices by approximately 40%. So, that's about 40 different apprentices this year over what we were able to gain in the past years. And every year, we keep continuing to improve. We also, because of Nico Dawson behind me, we were able to develop a customized training program, 60 hours in the construction building trade area for McKinley. We were also able to, under Nico's leadership, to create a workforce development where we not only had an employer appreciation breakfast, but we also helped small businesses through this, through the SBDC, the Small Business...
I'm typing it wrong, right? SB...
Yeah, sorry, girl, this is SBDC.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. There we go. And then the college also worked very hard with the college credit side of the house and healthcare to create a home health aid customized training program for Kennedy Care of Ann Arbor.
Our sterile processing program continues to grow. This last May, we actually graduated two students from the program who at the same time graduated and completed their GED. We've also done some training in sterile processes, processing for the University of Michigan as well as Trinity Health and they continue to contract with us to pay for their employers to participate in our programs. The college also developed an LPN transition program that will be launching in the fall due to high employer demand for continued training of LPNs. We continue to operate the Entrepreneurship Center and one of the key highlights in the past year has been our program that was funded through our foundation, the business of being an artist. We've also expanded partnerships with other academic divisions and continue to grow the Entrepreneurship Center mostly through a lot of programs in the area of arts and art programming.
The Small Business Development Center that we have here on campus is responsible for providing services to small business throughout Region 9. And that's approximately six different counties that is encompassed. And basically, in the past year, they were able to counsel 618 companies and they trained 484 individuals. They had 43 new clients or businesses that opened and they created or retained 776 jobs over that six county region, which is very, very significant. In addition to that, Washtenaw Community College was awarded, was awarded the Site of the Year Award. Dr. Blanca ended up accepting that for us because of the excellent work that the SBDC is doing on our campus for Region 9. So, we won that in the state, which we were very proud of. The college also launched for the first time our Intelligent Transportation Systems Online Training Program, which is 10 hours online. And it's, it was developed in a, in a format whereby it is not driven by start and end dates, it's driven by the customer. So, the customer can move as quickly or not as quickly as they want through that and it's all aligned with certification testing for employment. The college also worked in advancing the mobility sector through partnerships that we highlighted. And we were, we presented both at the ITS American National Conference. We were asked to do that. And we also presented, we represented the college for the Global Symposium that was held by the University of Michigan as part of our U.S. Department of Transportation grant. In addition, we hosted in partnership with MISH Auto, a night on campus where we married employers in the automobile industry and manufacturing with our own students. And it was an excellent night and it was a great opportunity for our students really to get to meet these employers and talk to them about not just jobs, but internships. And finally, we were able to provide interns to the University of Michigan at M-City, General Motors, Toyota, Nissan, and others related to the Advanced Transportation Center. So, our students are really getting an opportunity to get some real-life, hands-on training in the business market. In addition to that, we held for the first time our Smart City Symposium and we had 140 attendees from the Midwest attend that particular event. And finally, what I want to end with was the OPC MIA. These Operative Plasters, Cement Masons were on campus for the first time, as Marilyn mentioned, this year. They wrote a five-year contract with the community college. And so, adding another national trade union to the list of trade unions that we have was significant. The college continues to have an active partnership with Michigan Works and Dr. Blanca now is, serves on the board. And I serve as her alternate on behalf of the community college. And we also joined a membership with Lenaway Now. Since Lenaway County does not have a community college in its area, they're often looking for someone to come out and help with business and industry training in their county. And so, by creating a partnership and a membership within Lenaway Now, it provides us access to be able to work with those companies in that county. And finally, the Certification Center at WCC offers certification testing now in law enforcement and information technology professions. But the law enforcement one was the new one that we added this past year.
As part of our partnerships with K-12, the CEA program that we run at Ypsilanti Community High School that serves students from both Ypsilanti and Lincoln Schools, we were able to expand that program from 16 to 24. But we also started an introduction to manufacturing processes for those same high schools that we started this past year and it's continuing on this fall.
Shelley Zervos, who is in the back of this room. Shelley, you can raise your hand. Shelley runs the STEM Camp program for K-12. And this year, we had another successful year, but we added drones for the students and we also added a particular session in additive manufacturing. In addition to that, the college also holds a Campus Explore program for the first time. And the Explore program is in the college credit side of the house for recruitment as a way to really provide students with an opportunity to be able to see what different types of programs and training that we run here at the community college. So, it's a nice event to have students on, on the campus to do some career exploration before they actually make that decision whether they're going to enroll or not. Another really successful partnership for advanced transportation was our partnership with the Michigan Department of Transportation and Kirk Stottle. And basically, what is happening and what has happened for the last two years, we've had about 250 economically disadvantaged students on the campus that came down under sponsorship of, sponsorship of MDOT for those types of careers that are in the advanced transportation industry. And they spent a day on our campus just looking at the different types of labs and the types of training that we do here at Washtenaw County.
We, as part of the Youth Build Grant, we're in third and final year of our Youth Build Grant and we're in the process of completing a home with Habitat for Humanity for a low-income family in Ypsilanti Township. That has to be completed in December.
Also, as part of the U.S. Department of Transportation grant with the University of Michigan, we reached out to Scarlet Middle School in Ann Arbor and we provided coding training for those students and we paid for that as part of the grant as a reach-out activity for eastern Washtenaw County and, you know, Ann Arbor.
We use Alex for our math assessment, but it's also a tool that helps students prepare and improve their math skills. We've partnered with Ypsilanti High School, so as part of their STEM network college, to get their students to be able to access our college-level math classes. So, we use Alex throughout the school year, but we also have used Alex in our Summer of Bridge program and we saw significant improvements. We had 11 of 17 students who actually improved their math skills in a form of period using the Alex tool. We also have had one of our recruiters who's assigned to Ypsilanti. She has two mornings a week that she's actually spends at Ypsilanti Community High School where she can work with students as well as parents that may come in with their student. And that's been working really well. We started that late last year and will continue it with this school year.
And a big highlight of our year was the STEM, or continues to be the STEM scholars that you all just saw our presentation about.
The college also launched a health and wellness program last year. The launch included a walking program as well as free health screenings and nutritional counseling for our staff. We also provided free classes to faculty and staff covering a variety of health and wellness topics. As we move forward in 2017-2018, we just have partnered with Weight Watchers to offer a program to faculty and staff at a subsidized rate as well.
I'm also excited to let you know that Shelley Zervos, Anthony Williamson at Parkridge and the foundation office worked very hard to put together a coordinated funding proposal and they were awarded it. And it was approximately $60,000 to $69,000 a year for the next two years to be able to beef up educational programming at Parkridge, to be able to support those students in the after-school program.
Free College Day is this Sunday, but in our most recent Free College Day, we had nearly 600 community members to 37 free sessions, which was an increase of 13%. Our overall increase has been 56% since its inception in 2014.
The Health and Fitness Center continues to be an important part of the way that we serve our community. This past year, we had our highest level of membership for community members. In fact, in the wintertime, one might argue, we ran at peak. So, that's one part. We also got recertified as a health medical facility and that's a really important part of how we serve the community through our health partners with the Next Step program and beyond.
With funding support from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, the college will see completion of construction on a non-motorized pathway and WCC property provide safe opportunities for walking, jogging, cycling to from and within the campus.
So, over the last year, student development activities found, used some classrooms across the campus to provide reflection room space to students who wanted to use those spaces. With some renovations that we were able to do this summer, we will have a permanent reflection room opening up on the first floor of Student Center in just a couple weeks.
Faculty and staff, faculty, staff, and students continue to highlight their artistic endeavors in the community. We've had one large exhibit on the public buses and we continue to host exhibits at Curitiba Concert Hall.
We continue to partner with United Way and other nonprofit agencies in the county to help with the annual campaign promoting. We have lots in the park that we promote every fall that supports community organizations.
And finally, the Center of Excellence sponsored state and national health conferences for healthcare professionals, including the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, State of Michigan, the Michigan Dental Association. And Dr. Val Bries was one of the founding members of the Tri-County Opioid Summit that will be host here on campus.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I would just like to make a comment if you don't mind. This represents a lot of work. I mean, you know, it's a long report. It's a detailed report. The work that goes behind the effort that actually goes into each one of these initiatives takes a tremendous amount of time and support from the executive staff as well as the other administrators, faculty, and staff across campus. So, I want to thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
And masterfully choreographed.
We call this the popcorn. We call it the popcorn presentation because you never know where it's going to pop in.
Go ahead.
I did hear several references to grants and I was hoping that perhaps in October, November, we get a report. I don't need, I mean, the last time we got a report was very detailed, but I just need a brief description of the grant and who's responsible for it and how many jobs there are and how much money it is and just a simple sort of chart, not a complicated popcorn.
Got it. Any other questions on this? Okay, thank you. Moving on to monthly reports, tab B, the personnel recommendations. Recommendations at the Board of Trustees, according to personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Whoops, second?
Support.
Support, okay. Any discussion? VP Valtrey, would you like to add or highlight anything for us?
Well, I just, again, when I take the opportunity, very excited to have our new faculty here. And as we talked about, in terms of our efforts of bringing talent to the college, you know, I'm, personally, I feel very good about our efforts. We were very intentional and deliberate about the faculty search process in terms of our search as well as the interview process and onboarding our new faculty. And I hope that you'll see the diversity in terms of the new hires and some of the faculty we've brought to the campus, not only on the professional side, but classified as well. We're very excited about this group of folks.
Any questions?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Page two is really, they're all part-timers, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because, yeah, okay. And there were four professional teaching faculty, but I assume that the other will come later.
Actually, some of them don't show up in this report because they were already part-timers and some of them have kind of cycled on over the last summer.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, that's good. That's good. Just for my own understanding, under facilities, the Maureen Sastra is, who's, who is she replacing? Do you remember?
It was Sean O'Hare.
Yeah. Who?
Sean O'Hare.
Sean O'Hare. Okay, because I sort of took track. And Jeffrey Fitch in finance is replacing?
Jeffrey replaced Josh. I remember Josh's last name. And Josh actually got transferred to a different, Josh, thank you, got transferred to a different group within IT. So, it was kind of a daisy chain.
Okay, all right, all right. So, so we don't, yeah, it would be nice if we got a, under professional faculty, new hires, all of them, even if they were coming from part-time. You know, it'd be nice to know because I was beginning to get a little depressed that there were only four new teaching faculty, but there are 11, so I'm excited now. And that would have been nice. Last night, I was crying and now I'm happy. That's all right. And then Diana always thanks the retiring, full-time ending employment of 25, 16, and 32 years. It's an impressive group. Pretty soon, there won't be anybody working here that I know. But I do know them and I know the work they've done has been very appreciative. So, we thank them particularly. Sally Adler in the childcare center, really, and Lisa in math and Kathleen Weber in the dental assisting program. So, thanks, all three of them.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question about this second. Page two and these part-time, are they all part-time or are some of them adjunct faculty?
Because they're new, they're part-time. Because they have to work so many hours before they become adjunct. So, anybody who comes in new would be first part-time.
Okay. And then, so how long does it take before, and there's a limit on how many adjunct we have, right?
Correct.
There's some contractual relationship with the union. And is there also... There's some contractual relationship with the union. And is there also a limit on number of part-time based on a ratio with our contract with the faculty union?
Yes, there is. So there's a percentage that we look for in regards to the ratio of full-time and part-time faculty.
Could you get me those numbers?
How are we doing?
Say that again?
How are we doing?
We're doing well. We're five to six percent under the number, under the percentage, which I think is 37%.
Okay. And actually, with all the new full-time faculty, that probably helps us out?
Yes.
To get that number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of this report, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to tab C, the financial report. Recommendations at the Board of Trustees, receive the financial report for June 2018 as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on the financial report? Would you like to add anything?
Sure, thank you. So the board will be getting two reports on the year-ended fiscal 18 results. This one is the normal report, which is of the general fund, which the board approves that budget. And we had just finished the audit, so we delayed in reporting to the board the June results until we have the audit complete. A little later, we'll be presenting the consolidated financial results of the college, which includes not only the general fund, but the plant fund and restricted funds, and all those go into the annual audited financial statements. So I will do a PowerPoint presentation a little later that will show the more broader, fully consolidated results of the college there. And then Michelle Fowler will then present the audit findings and audit report to the Board of Trustees as well. So we'll back to the normal monthly report for June. As might draw the board's attention to page three of your package, that mid-year, we were forecasting that we would have a surplus, and we requested the board approve that we modify our budget to reflect both stronger revenues than original budget and lower expenditures than original budget, and to take that forecasted surplus and to allocate it to deferred maintenance and campfire maintenance to the tune of $4 million. So what you have here is a comparison of that amended mid-year budget, which at that time was forecasting a modest surplus of about $700,000, and you'll note that we ended up with a surplus in the general fund of about $1.8 million for the year. And like when we presented at mid-year, revenues continued to be strong for the college relative to budget, and then expenditures were trending below that budget as well. On the revenue side, we had a strong spring/summer. That was a very concerted effort across the campus to help to be able to attract students, both from the four-year schools, as well as we noticed that because the federal government changed the availability of Pell, that we had students that avail themselves of that opportunity in the summertime as well. And so that really helped. Our property tax revenue came in a bit stronger than we had forecasted. We had held a reserve, an estimated amount of what we thought would be the refunds for protested taxes, and that amount for refunds for prior years didn't come in quite as strong as we had forecasted. The state appropriations was a little better. When the state modified the MEPs' pension plan, which increased the employer contributions to the plan, the state made a commitment to make up part of that true incremental burden. And the way that came through was in additional appropriations in the second half of the year. And so that's the revenue side. So revenues in total came in about $1.3 million better than budget. On the cost side, we were about right on, if you note, for total expenditures, within about $200,000. Personnel costs actually were slightly higher than budget, and the main reason for that was too full. Enrollment was a little higher, so we had more part-time faculty costs, coupled with the fact that up until mid-year, we had been trending at about, you know, 32, 33 vacancies, part-time, excuse me, full-time vacancies, and we started to fill up a lot of those vacancies. The second half of the year, we were trending more towards 20 versus the 30. So that played into it. However, on the non-personnel side, we did better than planned. And so the non-personnel cost came in under budget, and so that brought us in essentially right at budget from expenditure side. So that is the general fund performance. Since this is year-end, we also go through a couple more of the statements in more detail. The deferred maintenance fund as well as the long-term investments fund. On the deferred maintenance fund, which you'll see on page five, we, even with the extra $3 million that the board had allocated at mid-year into deferred maintenance, you will note in the second grouping of numbers on page five, that the total amount we put into that fund, $15.3 million between the projects that have been completed, along with those that have been commenced, and our estimated costs, that the full $15.3 million has been committed. So going into fiscal '19, to which the board approved a new $2 billion of deferred maintenance fund, the entire fund had been fully exhausted. I just wanted to point that out for the board. And then last but not least, on the last page of this section, the long-term investment portfolio. A few years back, the Board of Trustees had approved a revised working capital and investment policy. As part of that policy, you had approved certain parameters to which we invest in our long-term assets. So this is the annual report, which is required per that policy that we give you. So how are we doing against those parameters? And it really is the bottom half of this page. So the first section is called Investment Type, and so the parameters within our policy say that for bonds of U.S. government, the state of Michigan municipalities in cash, we have targeted ranges in targets, and then you will see our current portfolio mix. So for instance, bonds of the U.S. government, we have a range of 25 to 65, a target of 30, and we're at 35%. So you can kind of see that mix. The area that we wish we had a little bit stronger is in the state of Michigan, that second line, we targeted 25%. Those bonds are very hard to come by, and when they have been on the market, there's such high demand for them that the yields are pretty poor. So we didn't feel, feel like it was in the college's best interest in all cases to participate. The next section on credit ratings, once again, between the strongest credit rating to the lowest there, you see the ranges and the targets. Once again, that we had hoped that if a poor-rated investment opportunity that we thought was worth the risk had come about, that we would be able to get a higher yield and it would be worth that risk yield. We didn't find any close. We tried hard, and none that we thought were in the best interest of the college, and so you see we have zero there. And last but not least, we have a board policy says that at all times throughout the year, that we will maintain 5% of our annual operating budget in working capital reserve, meaning in cash or cash equivalents. And you'll see that that number comes in at $5.2 million as held, and our lowest point throughout the year was about $8 million. We challenge ourselves to get close to that, but stay slightly above that number. We try to get close because we want our money working for us, but yet we want to make sure that we stay above. That's my comments.
Any questions?
Go ahead. I have a question that I probably should know the answer to, but I don't remember it. On page three, the operating transfers, where do we transfer from?
We transfer from the general fund surplus
Okay.
that we actually earned in the current year.
And one other question. Are the ML boilers and air handlers in the $24 million figure on page five, I mean, they're included in that or not?
They are.
Oh, good.
Yes.
I won't worry about them then. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All right. All in favor of the report? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to tab D, the facilities report. VP Allen?
Yes, thank you. This month's facilities report, you'll notice a couple minor administrative changes. We added a second line to every entry to explain a little bit on what the project is rather than just a budget number. And we also drew in this month the FY '19 projects that have been showing up on Vice President Johnson's reports for a few months. So now that we're actually starting work on them, we probably should put them in the report. Of noted projects this month, we just completed a campus-wide concrete sidewalk replacement in four locations on campus. That's item 19, or item number 26. We recently just completed a roof replacement for the family education building. And on item 34, the Health and Fitness Center domestic hot water system replacement is more or less fully designed now, and we're putting together the bid package and hopefully execute that work in the spring of 2019.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
I like the second line. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to remarks. Remarks from the Board of Trustees. Anyone?
I'd just like to thank all the people that put together these big, huge things that we have to read. I think we got four of these ones, and they're very well-done and easy to follow. And to all of you who do something with them, thank you very much. I think.
I just have a couple of things. Yesterday, a few of us had traveled out to Wayne State and visited Eastern Michigan University, you know, examining their campuses, you know, for our master re-planning session here. And it's quite interesting to see the designing challenges and the positives that each of the campus has, you know, experienced, and especially with Wayne State. And looking at what we have ahead of us, it is a daunting task, and it's exciting, but I'm really eager to see the end because it's so exciting. Listening to your report, I had some ideas that would actually work with what we were talking about, how we're going to expand our campus in some ways, some of the buildings, making it more, you know, flexible for what we need. And when the STEM scholars were here, one of them I know personally, Arava, we've worked together, and I love her. I'm so proud of her. But what I am most proud of her is that she is, tomorrow, you know, she talked about, and the other students too, talked about how fun it is to be in that program, and that's what we want. We want our students to be fun, and it doesn't matter what age group that they're in, because that excitement is what draws people to us. And we already have a fabulous image, a fabulous face, but we just want to make it just that much better, because there's, like, what's that commercial, "We don't make things, we just make things better"? Well, we're just making things better. So, and on top of that, I wanted to say thank you to all you guys, because you guys work so hard, and we have to sit here and just listen and just sit back and just say, wow, you guys are so smart. Thank you so much for all the things that you do. Appreciate you.
Ditto.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. President Blanca?
Well, I'm going to keep my comment to just one item, because we have more to accomplish this evening, and that's the National League for Nursing event that we had in Chicago, where we were granted the Center of Excellence in Nursing Education. And we are the only college in Michigan to receive this designation. It was really a proud moment. But what I think is great, that's all the faculty that had input in this program. They went down to receive this award together. And, you know, they had to make a lot of changes to their curriculum, to their whole model, everything. Everything changed in order to make this happen. So Valerie, thank you for your leadership. Thank you so much. And now, this is another thing that our students can put, I mean, I keep saying resume, they can put with their credentials that they went to a college, their nursing program is certified as a Center of Excellence in Nursing Education. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Tab E, review of the fiscal year '18 audit. VP Jackson?
Thank you very much. Should have, should have actually four documents. Three of them are related to the audit report itself, and in addition to that, there should be a PowerPoint presentation. So I will brief the board on the, as I mentioned, consolidated, thank you, financial results for the college. And then Michelle Fowler, the principal from Raymond, will present the audit report and their conclusions. So, as opposed to what you had just heard, in the general fund, as I mentioned, we had a surplus of 1.8 million. It's not up on that screen, but I assume it's up.
Yes, it is on hers.
Sorry, y'all.
I'll just have to just brief you all later. But, you know, as a college, we actually had a net deficit for the year of 1.3 million. And the culprit in the room is GAZB68 and 75. GAZB68, we adopted a few years back related to pensions, and this year, as you know, we had to adopt her sister pronouncement related to other post-employment benefits, GAZB675. So that was a charge of 4.6 million in the current year. And in addition to that charge, we also had to adopt at the beginning of the year, the beginning-of-year unfunded obligation related to GAZB75 of nearly $42 million. So the good news is, but for the pension and OPEB charge, we had a surplus at the college. The combined liability for GAZB68 and 75 at the end of the year is $167 million in total. Now, the good news, even with that $167 million liability, the college still has positive net assets of about $25 million, which is significant. I imagine many schools in its K-12 as well as higher ed are going to have balance sheets that will be negative as a result of it. And then in addition to that, so what does that mean for us? Again, as we talk about 68 and 75, it has no impact on cash. It certainly has an impact on our balance sheet, but on cash, it does not. So measure of goodness for us, and as done by the Higher Learning Commission, is called the CFI or Composit Financial Impacts. And the Higher Learning Commission looks at it both ways, after the impact of GAZB68 and 75 and before. And we're pleased to say that on a pre-GAZB68 and 75 basis, that we have improved our CFI yet once again up to nearly five. And just five short years ago, that was 1.8. So each and every year, the college So each and every year, the college has made steady progress to strengthen its overall financial position. This is an indication of adequate reserves. This is an indication of not having long-term debt as a burden, except for, once you look at it on a post-68 and 75, it goes negative. So the college is still in very good financial position for that. If you look at the next slide, slide four, if you look at the balance sheet for the college, assets have stayed about level year over year with that. Depreciation expense has grown a little bit more when we put in all that brand-new equipment that came from the CC Step grant that has a shorter depreciable life. So we used to run about $6.5 million a year in depreciation expense. Now it's $7 million a year. We're not spending as much money as that in capital expenditures. So that has as a result of reducing your net capital investment because you're amortizing that down. As I mentioned, our liabilities, the non-current side went up about $50 million. The lion's share of that was the adoption of Gatsby 75. And then we have these two other lines, deferred outflows, deferred inflows. And we like to look at those two net of one another. And they really relate to accounting recognition of future gains or future costs. And in Gatsby 68 and 75, when you have changes in extrarial assumptions and changes in returns on asset, they have a tendency to smooth that out over time. So you defer the immediate impact of those changes. You put it on your balance sheet and you amortize out over time. And that's what that reflects. And then down at the bottom, you'll note that our $25 million in total net position. Then you can see that on line 13, other unrestricted is $38 million, close to $39 million. Of that $39 million, about $30 million of that is totally unrestricted. It's not reserved for anything. So we've actually grown the amount of our uncommitted unrestricted assets by yet another million year over year. So that's, so when the board asks, hey, what's the amount we had in reserves? That's available to do things with. That number is $30 million. And that is about three and a half months of operations is where that stands today. Going to slide five for operating results. So this is our revenues less our expense. The largest impact of that, again, once again, is going to be the adoption of Gatsby 75, which you see down on line 11. And the pension accounting was a net charge of about 4.6 million. Our total general fund expenses, they increased about 2.8 million or about 3% from fiscal '17. On slide six, if you do a little deep dive on operating revenues, you'll note that tuition and fees is up just a little bit year over year. Credit hours was down just a little bit year over year, but that was more than offset by two things. One is that we had higher out-of-district and distance learning credit hours, which really helps. Coupled with, last year, we did have across-the-board tuition rate increases. They weren't large. So for in-district, it was about a 1% increase last year from the prior year. Of course, in this year, we've held tuition rates flat for in-district, but last year, that was a slight increase. So that helped to boost that up a little bit. Auxiliary services was up a little bit more. That was due to the strength of the performance of the Health and Fitness Center, as we mentioned before, and our membership is up. It's generating the kind of cash that it really needs to generate to support both the bond payment, which is about a million and a half a year, along with related deferred maintenance for the center. Going to slide seven for operating expenses. It looks like a big increase. We went from about $121 million to $128 million year over year. But if you kind of carve that out, about 4.7 million of that increase was solely related to Gatsby 68 and 75. So when you pull that out, we just had normal inflationary increases plus a higher depreciation expense, as I mentioned, related to our CC Step grant. And once again, if you add up all that portion of our operating budget, that supports students, instructional support, student services, and aid, it's about 64% of our total budget. About 64% related to that. On non-operating revenue, slide eight, we're up just a little bit. What's interesting is, I think, is kind of a corollary to what we mentioned before, Pell Grant awards. So in our general fund budget, we don't book as revenue Pell revenue. But on the audit of financial statements, you have to book that as part of what's called your non-operating revenue. And so it's kind of an interesting trend to be able to see how the Pell Grant revenue has changed. It actually took a big decline last year, but you see it's up this year. And once again, the main reason it's up is that the government opened up access in the summertime, spring, summer, for Pell. So that's really helped. State appropriations was down from 17 levels. But that really relates to timing of how we recognize that revenue. And property taxes was the big increase, about up 1.6 million. And as we've talked about, that's due to the larger assessed values. And last but not least, our realized investment income is way up year over year. This was the first year that we had the full deployment of the strategy that the board asked us to execute on. And we had a big increase, about $250,000 year over year, which was significant. On slide nine, other revenue. This really is a tracker of restricted revenue that comes into the college. So for instance, the CC Step grant that we received in the May last year, we just had a little bit left over for the current year. So that had the impact of reducing that revenue year over year. On slide 10 for cash, cash flows. You know, we like to look at the net increase in cash, but it's kind of fun to follow the bouncing ball, as I say it. So if you kind of look at those first two lines, which is your operating activities, and you offset that against your non-capital financing activities, and then you show a positive there. And that positive, and you say, so where do you spend it, right? And this is to the question trustee Hesch, that you asked on transfers. This is where capital and related financing, this is where all the transfers would happen. And then how we spend those transfers. So that you see that about year over year, we're about even. We generated about a little north of $2 million in total cash for the college, which is a really good thing. And then lastly, the general fund, if you kind of look at it by revenue sources, about a third comes from tuition and fees, about 49% from property taxes, 14% from state aid. And then on the expense side, instruction and instructional support is about 56% combined. And you see that physical plan operation is about 12, student services and aid is about 12, instructional support about 11, and the technology is about 8%. That's a new note. The state requirements, they dictate these groupings. And in prior years, the technology costs were not reported separately. They actually, they asked us to allocate those out functionally across those other slices of the pie. This year, they've asked that we slip that back out for reporting sake. And so you see the technology costs as 8% of our total general fund budget. And that's, yes.
Oh, go ahead. Your question's probably more relevant than mine, go ahead.
On the income side, Bill, how has state aid played over the last several years?
It's, so if you look at the general fund appropriations, the base appropriations, it's stayed just about level with inflation, 1% to 1.5% a year. Where state aid has really picked up is on pension and now on OPEB. Each and every year, for a plan to maintain its minimum funded status, you have to have X amount in. And so the difference between what the member employers put in, like us, and what's required, the state has agreed to allocate a portion of their budget to send back to the colleges, to send back into the pension plan. That's been growing every year to the tune of about $1 million over the last couple of years, along with just the changes in the plan itself and the carry cost on that. So although you don't see it in base appropriations, the state has done a really good job of staying true to their commitment of trying to keep the funded status of our pension plan on track.
I think I mentioned to you before, and I don't know if now's the time to ask about it. It's just amazing how you keep putting $1 million away in excess for us. You keep finding these million dollarses. And I would like to suggest to the board, I think, of having some sort of policy of when we have that excess, that we allocate some percentage, not 50, not 2, to student scholarships, so that we share some of that savings with our students. And I don't know what that number would be, perhaps a recommendation from your office, so that, you know, if it's $1 million, we could give some to student scholarships and share with them. I know a lot of it, priority goes to deferred maintenance, and that's very important. But I think some of it might go to student scholarships. So if you could recommend a number, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, if we did something like that, would it be, I mean, I wondered how it would work. I mean, would we create, for example, a board scholarship fund at the foundation, for example, that we contributed into and that set criteria for awards? I just don't know how that, I think it's a great idea, honestly.
I don't know how, that would be fine to do that.
Don't we have that already with the Pracasini Scholarship?
We have some trustee money already. We have trustee money scholarships already.
That come from the general fund?
Yeah.
Well, we could add to it.
Yeah.
But I don't know how we do it.
I mean, the college, this in the current year budget brand, we actually did, we did increase the total scholarship allowance. Last year, in each and every year, we are challenged to fully spend the allocated budget. So up until now, at least within the college money, I personally haven't seen it as a challenge that the college money needed to be significantly more than what it is now. But I do think that we need to look at that overall need and find ways to support that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, any, oh, go ahead, Dave.
So, I'm looking at the revenue, the operating revenue and the non-operating revenue. The Pell Grant award, is that essentially tuition support from the federal government?
It is, I mean largely, but not, I mean, students receive at times more Pell money than what they actually need for tuition. Part of it at times go for living expenses.
Right.
But in the main, it's there to support tuition fees books.
So that money is granted to the student. Is any of it in this tuition and fees? Like, is $27,000 of that, the tuition and fees revenue on the operating revenue?
So.
Is that?
That's a really good question. So I just pulled back up slide six, tuition and fees. You'll, you see 27 million of that, right?
27 million.
Yep, 27 million. So that is a really good point for how we present earnings to the board. Tuition fees is actually closer to 32 million.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, but for generally accepted accounting standards, we actually have to take that portion of the Pell money, which is used to support direct tuition and fees, and it's called a scholarship. And so we actually have to net it against the gross tuition and fees. So it kind of gives you a sense of that portion of the Pell money, which is going against tuition and fees. And how much is then going back to the student to support their other living expenses.
So we could guess from this that roughly $5 million of that $14 million Pell Grant award is going toward tuition and fees. And then I just wanted to call out, because we did hold tuition with no increase this fiscal year to benefit students coming from in-county as a kind of a thank you to our county residents who support us so generously in many ways. But we did raise the technology fee.
We did.
So we should see some in this budget year, when we're looking at the tuition and fees, we should see a little bit more of a boost there because that includes fees as well as tuition.
About $300,000 more in total.
And that's something to look, as we're looking through financial reports through the year, this year, we're going to be seeing that. Thank you.
And I would like to ask Michelle Fowler to come up.
Unless we have any other questions.
And Michelle, what is MPO?
Are those reports, are they on?
There or not?
They're not.
So you're going to have to, I can get them up there. Wasn't sure if you need them or not.
Michelle, if you could make this about a 30-minute report, this weather system will have passed.
It's going to be quicker than that. Much quicker. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Michelle Fowler. I'm the audit principal for Waschau Community College. Each of you had received in your packets three documents related to the audit. So the first one would have been the audited financial statements, which was the largest document. Because Vice President Johnson just went through in his presentation, all of the highlights were the financial status. I'm not going to go over that. I'm just going to hit the impact from the audit and the findings. So I am happy to report that the college did receive a clean, or what's called an unmodified opinion for the financial statement audit this year. Also, I wanted to point out, I know you're tired of hearing about this Gatsby 75 and the other post-employment benefits piece of the MIPSers Plan, but you've probably noticed that the footnotes are a little bit longer. So there's some more disclosures related to that. And then also, you had two new required supplemental schedules in the back of the report. But those are all things that are required under the pronouncement, but I don't really have anything else to say about that. So does anybody have any questions on the financial statement document? Okay, so another document that you received would have been the required communications that we have to make to those charged with governance. So that would be, it's in the form of a letter. So what I do want to point out in summary for that letter, we did not have any audit differences as a result of our audit. So what that means is when we came in and did all of our audit procedures, we did not detect any errors that we had required management to book. So very clean. Also want to point out in this letter, this is where we would communicate to you if we discovered any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting. And that would need to be in writing if we detected any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. And I'm happy to report that we did not identify those. Last year, we were talking about Gatsby 75 being the big pronouncement that was going to be applicable for the college this year. We do also have included in that document some upcoming pronouncements that will be impacting the college, but they're a little bit further out, or they're really not going to have any kind of a significant impact. So I wasn't going to cover any of those today unless anybody had any questions on those. Yes.
I've got a question.
Sure.
So on this communication letter, there's no date on it. Is there, there's just a yellow highlight?
Right. So because we're presenting this for the first time to the board today, all of these documents are drafts. And then once you go through your process, then what we'll do is we will then finalize them. And when we finalize the reports, that's when we have to put the date. So you probably know. So you probably noticed that on the other documents too, all of the dates are blank.
Correct.
But that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the letter? Okay, so the final document that you have would be the Single Audit Act Compliance Report. And that report summarizes the testing that we had to do for the college's federal awards programs. So the one major program that we needed to test this year was the Student Financial Aid Cluster. And we did not have any findings as it related to testing that program. So the college also received a clean or unmodified opinion on the testing of the major federal award program. So that summarizes my formal presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I could maybe just, I just really wanted to publicly acknowledge the team, the finance team and the financial aid team. So Lynn Martin and Ben Hunholz and Bart Philinger, their teams, and Lori Trapp, who's the Director of Financial Aid, her team, they just did an outstanding, standing, standing jobs this year. Really want to thank them for their, just amazing work that they've done.
I would agree. I mean, this is a very positive report.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab F, the 2020, 2024 WCC capital outline plan. BP Allen.
We discussed this at the last meeting. Are there any further questions?
Any questions or comments here?
This will give the board some time to take a look at the plan. The deferred maintenance is clearly identified in it. And if you have any questions this month, please feel free to call. And we'll answer any questions you might have or any suggestions. Other than that, we'll be voting on it at the next meeting.
So this that's in our binder is, has been replaced by what we were handed at the previous meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
So this is obsolete?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on tab F?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to tab G, the contract award for MLB Boiler. Would you like to add anything to that?
Right. Contract presented for discussion for the Morris Lawrence boiler replacement. This project accomplishes replacement of existing outdated boilers serving the entire Morris Lawrence building. This work is a deferred maintenance project previously identified to the board and is budgeted for execution from that fund. The building currently has two existing high-temperature hot water boilers that are original to the 28-year-old building. The building itself is a key community support asset and is one of the most busy, visible venues on the campus for customers both internal and external to the college. Boilers are highly inefficient by modern standards and have surpassed their service life expectancy of 20 to 25 years under normal conditions and with better maintenance. Despite heavy investment in repair parts to the flame and water management systems, boilers are highly unreliable and require frequent daily intervention by the facility staff to address flame failures and maintain temperatures in the facility. This level of attention diverts the staff from performing maintenance in other facilities. Under this project, three new highly efficient boilers were replaced at two existing units. The project work also includes primary hot water heating pumps, installation of efficient pump drivers, system valves, and controls upgrades. The new boilers and associated other work will provide high reliability, better temperature control, increased energy efficiency, and heating redundancy for the building. On August 15th, 2018, construction bids were received for this project and another separate project in the same area in an effort to capitalize on economy of scale. Monroe Plumbing and Heating of Monroe, Michigan was a low bidder for this project with a verified bid of $455,000 for $886. It is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract for Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company of Monroe, Michigan in the amount of $455,886.
Any questions on this?
I think it's very nicely presented for the lay reader. Nice job.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I almost understand.
And this is the one that has to be replaced immediately, is that correct?
Yes.
This is the boiler that has to be replaced immediately, is that correct?
It will be replaced in the spring of 2019. Yep.
So we can get through this winter, right?
We're.
So do we have to pray?
Yes.
Through the winter, or we're going to be okay?
Yeah. We can't replace it before this winter.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, well, I'm good. Go ahead, Dave.
So the, what we're approving is the labor? Because it looks like there's material in the thing on the back.
What you're approving is, these are two separate projects that were bid.
Oh, the one on the back is different?
Yeah. One and the next project is the exact same sheet. Monroe Plumbing and Heating came in.
Okay.
Had $1 million for, for both projects. And then we went through a bid verification process with them to figure out which amount went to which project and make sure. We actually went through an extra step with this, these two projects, brought the low bidder in, talked to them about the project, their bid, made sure they understood everything about it so that we don't end up with a surprise later, because this is a fairly significant contract and we don't want to proceed with this with some sort of misunderstanding that will cost money.
So the, what I'm looking at on the back includes an air handler in addition to the boiler?
Yes.
And we're only approving with this, or propose to approve the boiler replacement?
Yes.
Do we get the H?
Oh, okay. And just a question, are, do we ask, or do we have a policy that all bidders are paying prevailing wage?
We don't have such a policy.
So that's not something we even ask them if they pay union wage, prevailing wage?
No.
I know we're not allowed by state law to ask about any sort of issues about minority representation in their workforce. But I know I've raised it in the past that that could be a voluntary thing.
Right.
That contractors could give us, as long as we tell them that we're just asking this, you're not required.
Right.
To give us this information. Have we thought about doing that?
We actually, I could speak to that. We actually add, ask as part of our bid process whether you're on a voluntary basis, whether you're minority-owned or women-owned firms. So we ask that as a voluntary basis. We then, we keep that information and then periodically we go back and revalidate with all vendors, once again, on a voluntary basis. And starting now, actually starting with these two bids, base fund input from the board, we've actually now even gone beyond that and we have proactively gone out and found vendors that we think might be qualified to bid on this work. And we have engaged with them to let them know that the bids are coming up and just said, if you'd like to bid on it, we love, love the idea, you bid on that. So we're really taking some proactive steps, you know, in that regard.
Okay, I'm not going to raise, I'd like to, well, I'll look at some of the union wage issues down the road.
Okay.
Rather than bring it up on this one particular contract.
Right. Thank you. Can I just say one thing around that? We are looking at the board policy access to vet bids based upon a number of act, it's price being one, but quality of service, their reputation. So we're currently look, looking at what's called a responsible contractor scope, certification, if you will. And so Ben Hunholz, the head of purchasing, along with Mark Allen and his team, we are currently looking at that as, as we speak, that we, that we think in the end, when this is placed, we hope to do in the next month or two, that will really allow us to be able to bring in firms who have the full service and the full training to be able to support their teams and wages wouldn't be higher than that.
So if I could just ask a question? That's, that's going to be an administrative practice that supports the board policy?
Absolutely right.
Okay, so maybe we could just share that administrative practice once we get it done? So that might help.
That would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for tab G, tab H related?
Go ahead, Ruth. We wouldn't hire a company that didn't have union plumbers, right?
That's not an actual procurement question we're allowed to ask.
Okay. But we won't get in trouble with the UA, never mind.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to tab H, do you have anything you'd like to add on that one?
Tab H?
Tab H, we're on tab H, the MLB era. Anything you'd like to add?
Tab H is for the air handling unit replacement contract for Morris Lawrence Building. This project accomplishes the replacement of an existing outdated air handling unit serving the firing range in the Morris Lawrence building. This work is a deferred maintenance project previously identified to the board and is budgeted for execution from that fund. The existing air handler unit servicing the firing range is original to the 28-year-old building and has surpassed its expected service life of 25 years. The air handler's primary purpose is to eliminate toxic contaminants from the firing range environment during training sessions. The range is a heavily-used facility supporting long-sorts classes at the college and sees a high demand from outside agencies as well. Any system failures have a direct impact to the tightly arranged training schedules. Beyond problems associated with reliability, the air handler unit was undersized for the requirement from original installation and utilizes a filtered, partial recirculating design that potentially reintroduces contaminants back into the training space if filters fail prematurely or filter preventative maintenance is not performed as scheduled. The humidification portion of the air handler is inoperative and no longer repairable. The unit will be replaced by a new air handling unit with an energy recovery unit, an exhaust fan, humidifier, and associated components. The project scope also includes architectural work to create an access opening used to install the equipment. This new unit will provide better temperature control, increased environmental safety, and improve energy efficiency in the specialized space. On August 15th, 2018, construction bids were received for this project and another separate project in the same area in an effort to capitalize on economy of scale. Monroe Plumbing and Heating of Monroe, Michigan was the low bidder for the scope of work at a cost of $548,914. It is a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract for Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company of Monroe, Michigan in the amount of $548,914.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Both the boiler and the air handling units are a lot more efficient. How much more efficient are they? Is there appreciable cost savings in operating?
The boilers especially, you're probably going to see, you know, in the neighborhood of 30% energy efficiency, just, you know, in the, the way technology for boiling systems has improved in 30 years is amazing. So the modern systems are pushing 95% efficiency where it used to be in 70%, 60%. So.
Any other questions on this?
Is there any need for you to have us vote for them today rather than this month?
That would be helpful, especially in the case of the air handling unit. That, all those units are custom-built for the space they're going to go into. So from the time of order, it's a 12- to 14-week lead time to get the air handler ready, which pushes us in the spring. We have a arranged window for three months from March to June with the firing range folks that we've set up a downtime for them. So if your handler becomes a little late, then we start upsetting their training schedules.
Go ahead, Dave.
Unless there's any objection from anybody on the board, I'd move that we take a vote on this tonight, on both G and H. Let's support that.
Okay, so.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, so what do I got to do?
Should we do these separately?
Do I need to modify the agenda first to?
Yeah, move to amend the agenda.
Move to amend the agenda?
As action items.
As an act, okay. Do I hear a motion to move this tab H to an action item?
I move that we move both G and H to action.
Oh, you want to move both G and H? Okay. So do I hear a motion to move both G and H to action items?
Yes, I'd make that noise.
And you support?
Support.
Okay, so these are now action items. Any discussion? Okay. And then are these roll call votes?
Yes. So we should take them separately?
Oh, okay. All in favor of the, amending the agenda to move these up to actions? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so now we've amended the agenda, now we vote on each item. Okay, so tab G, Vanessa, go ahead and call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Well, we shouldn't move it.
What? Oh, wait, do we have to first motion?
Yes.
Oh, gosh dang it, you've already messed me up. Okay, so.
I move that we take the staff recommendation to approve a construction contract for Monroe Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $455,886 for the.
Boilers.
For the boilers.
Boiler, okay. Do I hear a second? Second, second, okay. So moved and supported, now we call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBury?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lina?
Yes.
Okay. Now I need a motion to move tab, or.
I, I move that we accept the staff recommendation to approve a construction contract for Monroe Plumbing and Heating of Monroe, Michigan in the amount of $548,914 for the air handler unit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and call the roll, Vanessa.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBury?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lina?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab I. These are action items, how resolution regarding section 230 of Public Act 265 for 2018. Tab I, the recommendation is that the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees certifies that the college does meet the best practice standards required for state appropriations under Michigan Public Act 265 of 2018. Do I hear a motion to support?
I so moved.
Second, second, okay. Any discussion on tab I?
We have heard it all.
We've heard it all, okay. And what is this, is this roll or what?
It is.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBury?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yep.
Trustee Lina?
Yes.
Great. Okay, moving on to tab J. Tab J, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise the 2018 schedule of board meetings and hold the October monthly meeting on October 30th at 6:00 PM in MLB Room 150. Do I hear a motion to support this?
So moved.
Support.
Support, okay.
Question?
Yes.
What was the prior board date we're moving from?
The week before.
The week before, like the 20.
23rd?
3rd, yeah. Okay. Go ahead and roll call.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBury?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to tab K. The recommendation is that the WCC Board of Trustees approve the appointment of, I'm sorry if I mispronounced this, Donald J. Pieroc? I'm not sure if I say it correctly. Pieroc? Okay, forgive me. As Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Director with a term ending in April 2021. And there was additional information included in the tab on his background. Do I hear a motion in support of this?